So all council members are present, it looks like. Everybody's counted for. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of West Liberty Regular City Council Meeting. It is February 2nd, 2021. All city councilors are present. Also, Lee Gertz, City Treasurer Clerk and city manager, interim city manager Elizabeth Hanson are present. We have an agenda in front of us tonight. Is there a motion to approve the agenda or to modify the agenda at all tonight?
I move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve and also a second. Is there any further discussion or questions?
I'd like, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend that to move some of the items under new business to either a work session or our next meeting. I think the budget presentation portion is going to take some time, so I would like to see items C, D, E, and F all moved.
Let's wait until we get to those business.
Just a second. So there was a motion and a second to approve the agenda as said. You did hear Councilmember Bronick's explanation about the reason why she would like to have that stricken and tabled until later date, but we will have to go forward with the motion. If you agree with Councilmember Bronick, I would suggest that you vote no, and then we would have to go to another motion. So all in favor to proceed with the agenda as is?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
No.
No.
Okay, the agenda as is has failed two to three. Is there a motion to modify the agenda?
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to delete from tonight's agenda items C, D, E, and F under new business.
I'll second that.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
Aye, no.
Hi. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Due to the large volume of individuals on this meeting, I am going to have to ask that when we're making the vote, I'm going to have to have you call each councilperson's name, and then they will answer what their vote is, because it is too difficult to see each individual member and know who's making their vote. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do it as roll call style, I guess, to make it easy on you. I believe Councilmember Smith was for the last motion. Did you get the first motion, two to three?
So I have everything at this point in time. I'm just saying, going forward, please just do the roll call, so then I can make sure I'm properly recording everybody's vote.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, we have two items. Well, we have one. I thought there was two, but there's one item in front of us, which is the approval of the consent agenda, and that is the regular council meeting minutes of January 19, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
I move.
There's a motion and a second. Councilmember Bronick, Councilmember Zacharias. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Councilmember Smith?
Yeah.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McBarren?
Yes.
Councilmember Bronick?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
It passes five zero. We have vendor vouchers claims list in front of us tonight in the amount of $244,954.44.
Motion.
Is there a motion to?
Second.
Was there a second? I didn't hear if there was.
Yes.
Yes.
Robbie did his second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
Councilmember Bronick?
Yes.
Councilmember McBarren?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock? Vendor vouchers claims list passes five zero. We have public comments and or correspondence. I do not see anybody that was on the agenda to speak to council. Let's go ahead. Is there? I am not sure if there's a large number of individuals that are on the council or on the Zoom council meeting. Reference the fire department discussion that was earlier in our work session. All it was was a work session. There was no decision, no action that was taken during that work session or that was or is going to be taken tonight. So I really would ask if you're here for anything that has to do with the fire department. We're not going to entertain anything reference that just because there's no action and there's nothing for the council to act on. If you have comments, correspondence, you can contact councilmembers through their email addresses, phone, or through City Hall with written correspondence. Is there anyone from the audience that has anything outside of fire department discussion? Reference public comments. And Lee, please help me out, because I don't have all members, so.
Yep, so I did, again, to the public, as the mayor has requested, you can unmute. And but as he stated, there is no action in place for in reference to the fire department this evening. And so if you have any other comments or questions, you can unmute, and you're provided no more than two minutes to address the council.
I'll go ahead and give about five seconds, just in case somebody's having issues with unmuting or whatever. Or go ahead and raise your hand, I guess, in the. Lee, since you seem to have a bigger range of who's on there, is there anybody that wants to address the council that's on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm not receiving any hands being raised. I have used the chat box, and I do not see any messages through chat. Therefore, I would recommend proceeding forward.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss anybody. Okay, let's go ahead and go around the council members. Reference public comments, correspondence, can't speak after the long night. Councilmember Smith?
Nothing.
Councilmember Rock?
Nothing.
Councilmember Bronick?
No.
Councilmember McBarren?
I only received just two comments, and one was from a Mr. Christensen in regards to tonight's council work session, and then the other was from a Mr. McBarren, who was just asking a question in regards to tonight's agenda. Otherwise, that's all I received.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zacharias?
I have not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and go to Lee and Elizabeth. Any public correspondence from the public for the council?
Mr. Mayor, I received some additional email correspondence from Mrs. Lisa Bronick with reference to the utility billing and disconnection, and I have communicated to her that I will again forward that over to the Utility Committee for their review.
Okay, thank you. Is that it, Lee?
That's all I have at this time.
Interim City Manager Hanson, anything?
Nothing at this time, sir, thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to our old business. We have discussion and possible appropriate follow-up of the vision, mission, values, and goals statement. This was in our council packets. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Hearing none. I'd like to thank the committee for putting that together.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Oh, sorry, I'd like to thank Elizabeth for helping out with this and in creating the structure for it.
Yeah, I think it was short and precise and to the point. I really like it. Any further? Hearing none, Councilmember Zacharias, how do you vote?
No.
Councilmember McBarren?
Yes.
Councilmember Bronick?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passes four one. Okay, we are on to the discussion, appropriate follow-up, reference the regulations of operating golf carts, ATVs and UTVs in the City of West Liberty, Iowa. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we do have, there we are. Santos from the County Board of Supervisors is here. If there's any questions that councilmembers have, reference the county ordinance, I would assume that you'd be able to answer those, Santos.
I will try to do the best that I can, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you.
I should go back and say that, yeah, I have had some, I have had some public comments. I kind of forgot about it until we got to this mess. I've heard, the comments I have heard is that, and I've had quite a few people contact me, they don't object to the golf carts. It's not the golf carts they object to. It's the ATVs and the UTVs. They think it's going to be very hard to control the age of the people that get on them, and there's concerns about them just zipping around the community where a golf cart can't go quite as fast. And, you know, the surveys show only one-third of the population, which is a very small amount compared to what our total population is. So that's all I have, I guess.
Well, from my point of view, you know, we did this survey, and anybody, even in the county, could do this survey. And I see one of the comments on here was that they pay the county, or they're registered with the county, but why would they have to register with West Liberty?
It seems up to the city to decide whether or not we allow those vehicles on city streets.
No, but I understand that. But what I'm saying is, how do we know that all the survey was done by people within the city? We do not know that. So I know the ones who went by paper and went to for billing and came in by mail, I can understand those. But the ones that were done online, anybody could have done those surveys.
That's correct. And we did address that a little bit. Unfortunately, that wasn't one of the questions on the survey, and so we're not able to find that information out. You know, I thought it was a pretty good response for the survey. I can't remember what the app is, but I was pretty impressed with all the responses we did get. And, yeah, I guess, just trying to feel everybody out, see where they're at. I've heard some bad comments. I've also heard people that are very much for it. And the people that were for it, they all had pretty good reasons as to why.
Can you touch on those reasons, Rob, please?
Some of them, such as medical reasons. One was a motorized wheelchair, that they could actually get a golf cart and get places quicker and not be on the road. Another one was it's just easier to get in a golf cart than it would be to get in a car or in a truck. You know, the golf cart's about the right height for them, and that it's just easier for them, especially if they're just going a couple blocks up to the store. Yeah, I mean, those are good reasons, and, you know. I wish that the survey would have been able to tell us who actually lived in the city. I do wish that we would have put that. And that's not something that we requested. It'll definitely be on there next time.
And Santos, question for you. Where is the county at right now? I know the last thing I read is that you guys won't allow people. So my question is, to go to the golf course, right? I mean, I know some people that want to use it to go to the golf course. So what is our problem there? Because I don't want to create a problem with the county.
I agree with you, yes.
I think that would be something that we would have to probably bring up to our board right now currently. That is something that we just felt there was too many concerns where individuals would be on those main highway or main roads. And the safety factor was a big piece for us when we chose not to allow golf carts to be included in our ordinance that we were bringing in.
And is there any way that West Liberty could get with the county and say that little portion of road that they would be allowed to? Or would it?
It would be something that I would need to discuss with our attorney, probably, and see what we could do and change on that. I think that was one of the big things that we wanted to make sure, because we were following everything with ICAP and wanting to have those points to be brought in. I think the only concern I would have with that is how would that be perceived when we start looking at other counties or other cities, I'm sorry, in the county that we're having to meet? Would that be another issue that we would say, well, Wilton wants to open it up to other? I don't know. I think it would just be something that would be concerning. I don't know the stretch, how long it is. I would have to have those questions that we had, just because of the speeds of the highway. And I don't know, you're on a main road. If we could designate and say, hey, there's a separation from the main road, I think that would be more encouraging for me to be able to look at it. But I think that the safety factor is a big piece for me. You know, how much traffic do you see on that road? I don't, and I don't know those numbers. I don't know those numbers. I think one of the comments that I did want to mention, just in regards to, you know, some of the success that we saw, when we guys were having concerns about passing this, one of the things that we brought up, because I was on the special committee for this to pass, was we looked at it and we said, we're going to review it after six months. We're going to prove it. We had, you know, an overwhelming request of kind of like Robbie's comments, how many people actually replied to it, the desire that they wanted to see it. So from my perspective, it was like, okay, well, we have the question when people say, well, it's legal for bicycles to be on these roads. Why can't we have, you know, our UTVs and ATVs? If you have concerns about, you know, vehicles or ATVs speeding across town and certain things like that, Diana, I think the question would be, is, okay, well, then that's going to be an enforcement issue. And it would be, another item would be, you know, obviously, if it turns out to be a problem, then you remove it. You guys are the city council. You guys can make that change. If there's success from it, though, and you start seeing local businesses, and, you know, one of our comments were, you know, hey, I can take this to work. I can drive my UTV and go to work, and then from there, go hunting in the morning or whatever it may be, depends where Shifty's at. You know, those were the comments that we had had from a lot of the general public in regards to that. So I think that I would, you know, if you were going to pass this, I would make a request as a council member from you to review it in six months. You know, how much, you know, how much success are you having? And then review it again in another six months and say, okay, we've had this in a year. We've had two tickets from, you know, violators from here and here, and we've had, you know, nothing else but success. We hear businesses, you know, having good feedback from it. I think that's the way I would approach it. That way you have an open-ended mind of seeing the other, you know, community and how you guys are actually having success from that. As far as the issue of the approval for that, Dave, I think I would, I would like to see where that's on a map, see the stretch of it.
Right.
And let me share that with our county attorney, because he was the one that drafted up a lot of this and making sure that we had all the approvals with the insurance in the county and the state. I'm sorry.
Right, thank you.
At this point, I'm going to go behind the amberneck. I share his concerns, and I am sure that at least 50% of the population in West Liberty do not have no interest in seeing this ordinance pass. You know, the rest of it, I agree with Bronick, liabilities, younger people behind the wheel, no safety as a regular vehicle. I do not like the idea.
Well, yeah, and I think. We can write, we can write the policy however we would want to. All these would be drivers that are going to be, they could be in a car driving too.
I read the ordinance that Elizabeth put together. I'm still not convinced that we need this ordinance.
Kara?
I have a question. I wanted to ask interim chief Lira his thoughts, and just specifically, if you've had troubles in the past, and I'm talking about troubles in the past in good, fair weather days, where there's been maybe complaints of ATV, UTV, or golf cart around that have had issues or violations? And then also in the wintertime, has there been issues with, I guess, the snowmobiling through town? Have you had issues where their community has sort of had problems enforcing or problems with that? Because I'm trying to, like, capture a year-round vision there.
Okay, I don't think, I don't think a year goes by without us getting, with the snowmobiles, that we always get a snowmobile complaint. We get a snowmobile complaint. Right now, we are investigating one snowmobile that we actually believe we know where the driver is. That being said, on fair weather days, when it comes to the golf carts and ATVs, UTVs, we get lots of complaints of them on the road, and we try to catch them, but we get, you know, there's a time factor when the reporting party calls it in, and we finally receive it, and we get to that area. There's time factor, and the person's gone. But what always, what's the common factor is they're speeding, they're driving like crazy, is the common factor of citizens that they're driving erratically. So that's my take on that.
Okay.
So, anything?
Yeah, so I think the city, and this is my view, I don't have a vote on it, but thinking about this, Santos, you don't want golf carts because of the slow speeds. I can see that being on county and all the roads out in the county, but that would be kind of flipped for the city, where golf carts seem to be a little bit better fit because of the slow moving and not having ATVs and UTVs that can gain, you know, high rates of speed in the city. So I think we kind of have a different, because of our geographical citizenry, that we have a, you know, flip-flop of an issue difference.
And, sorry to interrupt there. I understand where your perspective is coming from. In Wilton and Fruitland and those neighboring cities that have the approvals for the utility vehicles, they do have golf carts used. And so that was just our discussion, and that was something that I pushed to not have, just because of my concerns from the safety. Now, if I were in the city, I can see that perspective and saying there's value in there. But again, we look at the UTVs wanting to say, hey, if it comes with seatbelts, we want them to use it. We want them to use it as almost like it's a vehicle, because it's going to have insurance, it's going to have all the liability things. Now, I will comment also that the City of Muscatine wasn't in favor for it, but we had so many county requests that if you were to poll the amount of people that actually came and actually commented on it, they were in favor of it. And I actually had some from West Liberty as well, too, that reached out to me. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with that part as far as saying 50% are against it. I would research and ask more people if they're against it versus just asking who's in favor for it, because that's what the people are asking, and that's what we ended up getting it. So I think that would be the comments that I would have on that.
I would really see us do some kind of a trial period. Obviously, we still need to work on, you know, a draft of our own. But, you know, the vision statement that we just approved, the last words in it are equal opportunity for all. So, you know, we just proved that. This is something some people do want, and I think we should give it to them.
And Rob, do you think we possibly, do possibly, maybe just golf carts at first? Just give it a trial period? I mean, instead of all the UTV, ATV?
I guess, that's for discussion. You know, at this point, the committee hasn't moved any further, because we need a little bit of direction, so.
Well, I mean, what is your perspective? What do you guys think that you would, the route that you would want to go? I mean, allow them all or only one to start out with?
Well, I'd rather allow them all than just see how it goes.
On a six-month, you know, reevaluation?
Okay, any further discussion?
Can we say something as members of the public in regards to this resolution that's being considered? Because I think a very important point was just made about equal opportunity for all. But if you think about the population of the City of West Liberty, I think it was councilmembers like Zacharias. How many members, how many, how many people in our community actually have golf carts? And is this only going to benefit a very small portion of people, just to make them happy, right?
I agree.
Lee, who's talking? I couldn't see who was talking.
This is Liz.
Do you want to announce yourself? So, Councilmember speaking, thank you.
Yep, my name is Liz Lara, and we just moved here. So I've been just tracking the information. So it's just interesting to hear the conversation, because some voices are being heard, but we're not considering the total population of West Liberty. So how many people in town actually own golf carts? And, you know, the resolution included the survey results. We don't even know, you know, that hasn't really been shared with the public of what. We don't even know, you know, that hasn't really been shared with the public of what came out of that in terms of percentages. But is this something that's only going to benefit a small portion or the actual portion? You know, the actual entire community of West Liberty?
Okay, thank you, Liz.
I don't know.
Okay.
Person in town that owns a golf cart. And that's where I made, I think 50% of the population, that's where I'm, I'm allowing to.
Okay. So, so, so Elizabeth, can you, uh, share, uh, some of the highlights of the survey, for the residents real quick?
Sure, yeah, in the, um, in the, on the action form, it says of the electronic, there were 462 and the mail-in or the, uh, utility bill responses was 176 or a total of 638. Thirty-seven percent of the population, however, like, uh, council members have shared in their concern, we did not ask where they, uh, lived or resided, um, in the just four quick question survey. And we would have had to look at each one of the, uh, email IP addresses to kind of figure out where that could possibly be. So it was just, uh, more, more time to, to get into that, so we did not do that.
Is there any way that on that survey I see from the mail-in that we could go back to those and see how many were for and against?
Um, Nick is on, I believe, and he could potentially answer that, he, uh, tallied the results.
All right, um, off the top of my head, I can tell you that even electronic and mail-in were 75, 25%, 70, 30, like in favor, so both ways.
Okay, thank you.
Your com- your comments that you have on the, uh, action form, those would have been all from the write-ins because we didn't, we didn't do, uh, comments on the electronic version either, just so you guys know that.
Again, the point I was trying to make it, uh, behind the comments of Robbie, yes, I am all for equal opportunity, but not for the one or the 2% of the population.
Okay, so, uh, does any of the council members need a moment to look at the ser- So we, we have a, we have a motion and a second in front of us, and this is, uh, to allow all three. So, uh, if you wish to allow all three, then we need to say yes. If there's a modification or to send it back, we're going to have to vote against the motion to approve.
Mayor, did we have a motion for that? I don't think we did a motion. We have not done a motion to approve.
I think, I think we made a motion and a second correctly.
Yep, so we have a motion and we have a second on the floor, um, to approve, um, the, to approve the information before us.
Yeah, I thought so because I, I wouldn't have went to discussion, so.
But I think that was for just discussion, we didn't talk about approving to approve this, we approved to talk about it, correct?
Um, Mayor, there are three options in the action form. So we were recommending that, um, option one was to direct staff to complete a draft ordinance and then that's where you could tell us if it was three or two of them or one of them. And, uh, the second was to refer it to the Public Safety Committee with, to get more information or alternate ideas, or maybe, again, you could refer it to them to talk to Santos and the depart, the Board of Supervisors to, you know, to discuss, um, those other options or do, to do nothing at this time. So there was three different, um, options there for consideration or of course, um, any other, uh, motions. But I think you just opened for the discussion, the motion was, I think, just for the discussion. It wasn't really clear, um, what the option is.
Yeah, because when I made the motion, I didn't declare an option, so that was not, that was not clarified.
Okay.
Yeah, the committee's just looking for direction.
Okay, do we, do we have a motion to, uh, one of those three action plans then? Or a motion to, to send it back to committee to rework it and bring it back to the council?
I think.
You heard the.
I motioned to take it back to the committee because we're going to have to have some very good direction before we try to approve something and have it written out on what we're going to approve. Because right now we don't have anything that approves what, exactly what they want to do.
Okay, there's been a motion to send it back to committee. There a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion, uh, reference sending it back to committee? Okay, hearing none, councilmember Zach Rice?
I am for. I mean, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to, I was seeing some clarification because I thought you were kind of against it, so. Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Passes five zero to go back to committee? Boy, what a simple, uh, concepts, uh, become a very difficult, uh, uh, deci- decision and, uh, consensus among council. So we're going to head on to new business, uh, for anybody that's following along. Uh, the council has, uh, decided to table C, D, E and F, so we have two, two items in front of us tonight for the new business, and that is, uh, request, uh, for waiver of late fee from Simpson Memorial Home, uh, that was presented to us. And is Cliff McFerrin, uh, on the Zoom with us?
Um, Mr. Mayor, he did reach out and, um, I had communicated to, uh, Mr. McFerrin that his letter correspondence and then the staff's memo for recommendation was sufficient, um, said he did not need to go ten.
Okay. And so up in front of us is, uh, did somebody, just some interference, okay. Up in front of us, Simpson Homes, uh, requesting a, a one-time waiver of late fees, uh, and those were listed in our, uh, council packet, uh, there's four accounts, uh, for that. Uh, Lee, what's that totaling? I'm not going to do it in my head here.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know that, um, Mr. McFerrin, uh, is available if any, uh, is available currently right here if there's any question or anything, uh, you need of him.
Okay, that's kind of funny that you have such a connection.
Yeah, I, I don't know how.
And that, so, eh, there, there are four late fees, $6.46, 71.62, 499 and, uh, 124.41.
$600.48.
There we are. Uh, he has, uh, drafted a letter asking that, uh, we waive those, that, uh, they are, uh, the third largest customer and, uh, this is the only time that they've ever been late. So is there, uh, any motion to proceed on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, councilmember Rock, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Councilmember Zach Rice?
Yes.
And councilmember McFerrin, do you want to abstain?
Uh, yeah, that would probably be a good idea if I abstained from that, being the relationship and all.
Okay, thank you, high class, it passes for extension.
Thank you.
So that's going to clear the docket for new business, or no, sorry about that, we are at, uh, um, fiscal year 2022 budget presentation. City manager Hanson?
Yes, um, so if you don't mind, I'm going to share screen, that means you won't be able to see a lot of these beautiful faces. Um, I'm going to share my screen and present the budget, uh, next year's budget to you. Um, for council, I, if you could, I'm going to re, please refer to the actual documents that are behind the presentation, those are going to be easier to read, okay? Should be able to see the budget presentation, is that right?
Yes, I see it.
Okay. Okay. All right, so if council has any questions, um, please chime in anytime throughout the presentation. Um, for the many people that are on the call, we already did a budget 101, budget basics in November. I believe it was the 17th of November, which was more of like a, like up here 101 of, um, you know, general, where does the money come from and where does it go? What's a general fund and stuff like that? And actually, um, I will ask the staff, um, that we get both presentations on the website, um, later this week, um, if we can. So please interrupt if you have any questions, uh, throughout the presentation. All right, so reviewing of the agenda is what we're going to do real quick. These are little housekeeping things, we're going to review, um, the budget basics from November 17th, just real brief. And then I'm going to show you the budget timeline and the process. Um, the next, but really the agenda is to, to show you the presentation, to discuss any potential changes tonight. And then the next step is that staff needs to take those changes, update all of the documents because as of this evening in your packet are prepared publications and the state forms. So, um, so that, uh, and so we'll have to set the public hearing um, at the next meeting to certify the levy on March 2nd. So we want to have that publication in the next packet for you. Um, so kind of going over those budget basics that we talked about before. We talked about cash solvency and, and how you have a fund balance of, you know, somewhere around $13 million in the bank, but it's not all expendable. And we've talked over the months about how, you know, your, your revenues come in, uh, at certain times of the year. You know, maybe, you know, maybe twice a year, um, but your expenses are coming in all the time. So there's reasons why you have a fund balance. Um, plus it helps you with your bond rating when you're going to borrow. Um, and then in the long run, of course, um, you know, it, for the long term, we need to know, uh, we plan for what are the, you know, new businesses that are coming on. Construction will add value to that and it will change, um, how much tax dollars, industrial tax dollars that come in. Um, and again, continue, we want to continue to review, um, fees to cover, uh, the costs, revenues versus expenditures. So these are things that we, we look at to move the organization forward, to budget appropriately. You know, we work with the staff to make sure that our expenses are, uh, true and the revenues, um, how do I want to say that? We're more conservative on the revenues and then we want to make sure that the expenses are right on. So, um, so we're very conservative when it comes to the budget process. Um, you know, personal budgets again are kind of easy to, to know what your monthly bills are and when you expect to get your paychecks every month. But here again, you're managing a $13 million budget. And, uh, and typically, like I said, your taxes are paid in April and September. So that's kind of around those times is when the city receives most of their revenues, property tax. Um, staff typically, like I said, is conservative when, when budgeting the revenues and they base their expenses off of history. So we talked, uh, with each of the department directors about how important it is to make sure that they're coding their expenses properly so that it captures, uh, it captures that history over a three-year period. Um, and of course, we're budgeting for, you know, next July to expand, but we started in August. So we're trying to make sure that we are, uh, again, it's a planning tool, a lot like the capital improvement plan and the equipment plan that you already put in place ahead of this process. And so, um, it's just good to have that, those communication pieces in place so that you can, um, so it all kind of ties together. So those are all things that we've done ahead of this. Again, we talked about the purpose of fund balance, making sure that you have a good fund balance for, um, those emergencies that can come. Uh, I don't know how, how hard the duration, uh, hit your community. Again, we kind of reviewed that with the, with the media, but, um, it could have been a lot worse. And then, and maybe you were having to expend millions of dollars and you want to be able to have that on hand if things, uh, go, uh, it, it, those unexpected emergencies that occur. Um, again, most of your, uh, your, your income comes from property taxes. And, um, and then of course we've watched the rollback and right now my understanding is that, uh, the governor is recommending that, uh, that the backfill is going to be included. So we have budgeted to allow for the backfill. It's roughly, I think I remember $23,000, uh, but, um, but that's important to know as well. Um, now here is the budget timeline, um, you've seen this about 100 times, um, but you know the budget process starts in August. Um, we've done all of these pieces, uh, budget basics we did in, in November actually. Um, budget worksheets were due from the, went out in October to the department directors. And then the worksheets were due back in November and that was the first time everybody got a look at what the capital improvement plan, the equipment revolving plan and the tax increment financing documents were looking like at that point. Um, the budget, um, committee recommended those in December and they set the public, the council set the public hearing in January. And then basically after the end of the year is when we find out what the valuations are from the county. And we immediately started meeting with department directors one-on-one for the first two weeks of January and went line item by line item, um, on the budget. Um, and, um, it was a ream of paper. And so what I did for this presentation is I broke it down for you in, like, really a couple slides per department. And I show you, the first column is, uh, what was budgeted this last year and then what we budget, we're budgeting for this next year in each of the areas. And then I will explain to you in those slides what the difference is, okay? So the capital improvement, uh, improvement projects map is in your packet. And I just refer to this really quickly for you to, I mean, you can't really read this, so, uh, I refer, refer to your packet. Um, again, this document should be on your website already. Um, this also should be included in your packet, so it's really, like I said, very hard to read. Um, but I think if you open up your packet and you look at just that one column that I've circled there, the capital projects fund helps ensure that each capital project has a dedicated revenue, um, source to offset the project expenses. So the typical revenue sources, um, include a combination of borrowing, local option sales tax, donations and grants, utilities and an inter-fund transfers. So the city is budgeting for the items in that first column only. Even though you approve the plan, you're really approving just in this year's. Even though you approve the plan, you're really approving just in this year's budget, this one column. Okay, and not just this page. There's, there's two pages to the capital improvement plan, as you know. So the, but the city's budget for these items is in that first column. And the majority of the work is really engineering design ahead of construction that's planned for FY 2223. So you can see all the street repairs and all those projects listed on the right column, or excuse me, the left side column. And really the, if you look at the first column that's circled, it says engineering legal on the top. That's in preparation for construction the next year. The backside of that is the construction administration, which is doing the quantities and making sure that those streets are done for the specific things that are approved. Did you have a question, Jose?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, okay, sorry. So annually, the city undertakes a wide variety of infrastructure projects ranging from, you know, water sewer pipe installation and paving of city streets. And the same goes for funding the projects with an assortment of funding sources from levying of property taxes to, you know, to, it could be, it could be dipped like appropriations, federal appropriations, state grants and so forth. So it's a, it's a, again, a wide variety of, of pieces, financial pieces that make up the capital improvement plan. And, and for council, this has been incorporated in the budget. So for every department there, we made sure that it lists all of these infrastructure improvements as well. So again, you've looked at it, you just proved this not too very long ago, last meeting actually. But just as a recap, this, the capital improvement plan for 2021, 22 is upwards of $791,000 in expenditures. Eighty-three of it is for an infrastructure investment. 10% is for street, or excuse me, is for park and, park improvements. And 7% is for electric and one, less than 1% is library improvement. So, so that kind of just gives you a little summary update of that. And then I just listed them a little bit easier to read here. And I think I said 790, it's 712, excuse me, little document there, okay? And again, I told you I was going to compare last year to this year. Of course, you didn't have these plans last year, so that's why you see a zero. You saw the equipment revolving plan last meeting as well, which was approved. The total dollar amount, the bottom is 450, that is being included in each one of the department's budgets. Not that full amount, of course, as you can see for solid waste, we planned for $50,000. But as you know, they're not going to expend any dollars this particular budget year. So they're putting it away for equipment in the future. Some years you might have 450 and then you'll have expenses that might be 600, $700,000. That's because you have the reserve revenue that's revolving in those funds. And when that happens, you'll be told and you'll understand why, because it'll be explained on your state form, why there's a negative there. So just know like, it looks like you're over budget, but you're actually, some years you're not spending money in those funds. Does that, does that make sense to everybody? Local option sales tax, you received a copy of this in your packet as well. It's just a spreadsheet that I put together for you to show where you're allocating your local option sales tax to. Lee had said, and Lee, you could chime in please during this presentation, that the allocations for local option sales tax were not necessarily identified in the budget exactly. Is that right? Where it was going to be spent? So by having this document, now it's, we've tracked it and cross-tracked it in the budget. So you will see some of those, those comparisons. It'll look like, oh my gosh, we're really going to spend a lot in this area. Well, that's because we're, we're going to account for all the local option sales tax revenues and expenditures properly. So I'll explain that as well. Lee, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, just to add, so this is in regard, so this is outlining, again, it was a comment from the state auditors. This is in line with your ballot that went to be voted on, which communicates a third, a third and a third of local option sales tax. And so this is the piece that's identifying how the local option sales tax money projects, all the information that is needed to go in line with that ballot that was voted on and, and approved by our community.
So really quick, I didn't spend a lot of time on this document. It's been in your packet, but, but I didn't really spend a lot of time. So here's the revenue broken down per the referendum that Lee had just referred to. And then for the department disbursements, so basically, this is, these are the departments that, that received the operational dollars. So last year, what I was saying is that the general fund in general, they just put the 142 in there. And then parks received 55,000 and 80,000 for the library. But then down here, we're showing that now that you have a capital improvement plan and an equipment revolving plan in place, we're going to now utilize local option sales tax to cover some of these costs. And we broke down the 80,000, we appropriated where those funds will be utilized. So.
So I see that we had the police department and all the other departments, but nothing for fire?
I did not receive an equipment revolving plan from the fire department or a capital improvement plan from the fire.
Okay, all right. Well, I was just asking. Thank you.
You bet. So with that said, and actually I did draft one. What was difficult is that in order to get all of their apparatus within 15 years, it was going to, it was going to have to be like $300,000 a year to put in that fund to cover those costs. And that just wasn't realistic. So we have to, we're going to have to find another way, find another way. So, okay. So with that said, you can see that this, this is in line with that last form of the equipment revolving plan for the departments. It shows where like, you know, the general fund departments that were going to make sure that they had transferred this, these dollars into the equipment fund so that they could pay for their, their equipment revolving plan. So. Good. And then you saw Chip at the November meeting. And he talked about, again, this document's me hard to read, but it is in your packet. He talked about the history of the levy rate. And I put it in green on the left side here for you. And I can explain, you know, maybe in 2018, 19, where there was a jump in that levy rate. And my understanding is that, is that in 1819, the previous clerk had certified TIF for a bond issue and at the same time certified the levy rate. So, so now there's a, there's an amount of, so it was kind of double, double levy there for the bond issue payment and certified the levy to cover the bond issue payment. So there's some funding that is set in the TIF account that could be utilized for your street, your capital improvement plan. And that will, Chip has already realized, okay, how much can I use from that? So that you're not going to have to borrow as much in your CIP. So, so he's aware of that, of those, of those funds that are sitting there, ready to, to be utilized for street infrastructure improvements. Um, this shows you that, and I'm going to get into it a little bit further. But what we're recommending is a $16, 1602036 for a budget levy this next year and for really the next, for the next eight to 10 years to cover your capital improvement plan. TIF, or excuse me, Chip also provided this exhibit, which exhibit two. And what I wanted to show you here is that we're talking about the, the capacity for, for funding, for borrowing. And, and so let me see here, make sure I'm on here. So this, this lists the city's levy, legal debt capacity. It reflects what, that we're within the constraints. So we're within the, the legal capacity to borrow throughout the whole, the whole plan. So again, you know, if you look at columns F, G, H and I, those are your current debt issues. But then here's what is being proposed. So there's a street, you know, this one's for streets in 2022. This one is for the city hall police, phase two in 2024. And then another street improvement, again, taking the capital improvement plan and plugging it in. These would be all your, the, the amounts that would be borrowed. And you're never over the 100% levy rate, or excuse me, debt service rate, okay? Column, oh yeah, that's your percentage. Okay, so the plan illustrates that you'll never go over the limit. Again, very hard to read and I apologize for that. So refer to your packet. This is the debt service levy, levy, oh, this is terrible. I'm so sorry. And I can't really, oops, I can't really change it. So, so if you're looking at your document, this right here is D. This is showing the current valuation that the city has. And what Chip did is he assumed that your property tax valuation will go up only like 1% a year. So he's very conservative about any growth in your, in your community. And again, if you get many houses built, a subdivision bill, you get a business that increases their valuation. That's going to be more than, you know, maybe 1%. So we're, as you're planning for economic development, I'm sure that that will change. And you will get updated documentation as you borrow. So G on your documents is showing your proposed debt service levy. And that's where we talked about last time, the 2.25%. And on your state forms, I'll show you where that is. It's basically saying we need $2.25 per thousand to help pay for these bond issues. And so in columns I, J, K, L, M and N, all of these here, those illustrate what those funding sources are. So it's here, local option sales tax, local option sales tax here. You've got some utilities and then you've got TIF revenue and there's a use tax here. There's a lot of sources, as I was saying earlier, that go into these projects that are listed in O, P, Q and R. So there's a lot of pieces and that's what I was saying is we've got that planned for moving forward. So I was going to give you kind of a overview of tax increment financing. And I don't know if you want to spend the time tonight to really go through, I think I did this last time. But I will just say, you know, again, you're, when your TIF district is, is created, the base valuation of that property value is established. But if you increase the assessed value over time, over and above that base, that's the increment. That's tax increment. So again, if you have a flat piece of property and you build West Liberty Foods on it, that increment is going to be, say, the $100,000 piece of property that was there, the farmland. And now it's multimillion dollars. That could all be captured as tax increment financing and help pay for your streets, help pay for more buildings and more businesses and acquiring more property and land to do subdivisions and so on and so on. So that's why you always hear a big push for economic development. And plus, as you remember from the budget basics, your residential properties pay less than, you know, around 50% of the tax bill, where all your commercial and industrial businesses pay 90% of the tax bill. It helps with the quality of life for you, your community. Again, another one hard to read, but this is exhibit four in your packet. And it's the TIF cash flow. So it really demonstrates the manageable level of general obligation bonds with tax increment financing dollars. So when I showed you those funding sources before, it's really taking, it's really taking column M from that last document that had all the different funding sources. And this is just a zoom in on the tax increment financing. I think in the past, it was misrepresented that you didn't have enough TIF to do anything. This shows you millions of dollars in tax increment finance. If I see right, I think it's like around 2.8 million dollars, so a few million dollars in. But then if you go down the proposed debt, you are talking $6 million and that you'd be utilizing tax increment financing for pieces of these bond issues to handle your street project, your city hall project, and then the final street bond issue in column P. Okay. Okay, so now you also have in your packet, the state, the state spreadsheets, the documents. These are what goes to the county to be certified by March 31st. So taxes and tax rates are typically discussed as a millage or a mil rate, which is the amount of taxes paid per thousand, per thousand dollars of taxable valuation. So this is going to show you, again, the taxable value is determined by the overall assessed value and it's multiplied by a percentage of that state rollback. I'm scratching a little bit of that. So up here, you're going to, you're showing really your valuations. And then your regular general levy rate of 810. That's the maximum general levy rate that you are allowed by law. And then you can add, you know, different rates for if you had a civic center, if you had aviation authority, I mean, these are other things. But here is where the city assesses a levy to help with the liability, the property, property liability and self-insurance costs. So there's a percentage there. Then you have, oh goodness, sorry, hang on. And then here you have the ag land, which is kind of typical. It's not a huge dollar amount, but it's the $3 there. And then emergency levy, you have benefits here. And then at the bottom here is the amount, basically, the amount that's plugged in there is the 2.25. And my understanding, Lee, the reason why this doesn't say 2.25 is because of the balance that you were going to use. Is that right? You're on mute there. There you go.
So.
To keep this low and to keep it by around $16 per thousand, we were able to utilize this year, right? The, the remaining difference?
The debt levy for the current 2020 general obligation bond. It was formerly the, the library bond we refer to it. And this is the new bond interest that we always use that levy for, for that payment.
Okay, so the second state form is the next one. And again, hard to read, and I know that I talked to a couple council members about that. I'll go through each one of these columns. So if you're looking at that spreadsheet, that's a state form, I'll explain what, what each of these mean. So column C, and this is the adopted budget summary. Column C is the general fund. So of course, your chief operating fund. It shows that at the very bottom, I wanted to show you that we are not, 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 not expending more than what we. not, not, not expending more than what we're taking in. So there's a positive balance there that will go into the fund balance. Column D is special revenues. And so those revenues are restricted where monies can be budgeted and spent. So road use fund, that's restricted for roads, obviously. Local option sales tax per year referendum is restricted. That's where we're going to show the special revenues in those, in that column. We're going to show the library and park donations because again, those are special revenues and they're restricted for whatever they say the donation is for. Column E is your TIF and that is again, shows what we're going to take in and what's going out. Comes right back out. And then column F is your debt service payments. So again, you know, we we show like, you know, that's, that's a just a little overage estimated what your payments are going to be. They might, might be just a little bit. Payments might be under that. So that's why we're showing a balance there, like a fund balance there. H is permanent accounts and funds. And you don't really, you don't really have one set up. You don't have like a, like a cemetery perpetual care fund or you know, some might have an endowment that was before the rules changed that you can't have endowments and you can only really, you know, invest your monies in CDs and what the government allows us to. So you don't have any permanent permanent accounts there in H. Now proprietary, that's going to be all your utilities and they have to support themselves just like any other business would. So you have a little bit of a fund balance there as well. And again, you're talking, you know, four or five different utilities. So that's understandable. That might be a high dollar amount. Lee, do you want to talk about? So what you have there is what we're budgeting in in column J. And I had a question earlier from a council member on reestimating. Do you want to just talk about that for a second?
So part of the budget process, we go, we have to do what's called a reestimate. We're 50% through this 21 budget. And this is where we go through and we reestimate or recalculate revenues and expenditures based on what's been expensed and what's been received. A lot of times this is a piece that helps direct clerks, treasurers, financial people to understand where a budget amendment is needed. It calls your attention out. If you've had changes to to what's needed, so you can prepare for that budget amendment. This is allowing the state to know the checks and balances of where we are currently at with the 21 fiscal budget.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about the state forms? They look familiar probably to you if you Okay, so last year, the state added this the the requirement to provide notice of your property tax levy. And so we've added that into the budget timeline. And in order to do that, that's why we need to make any changes in this next week. And that's why we wanted to have the discussion with the council tonight. So that when we go to our next council meeting, that this form is in your packet and it's providing, this is what we're setting the public hearing on. So the public has notice of this document. And we're required by law to hold a public hearing explaining that this is what your levy rate is going to. So the budget goals, it looks like I wrote all over this. So the overall goals for us is was to create a long term, sustainable operating budget and a financial plan that includes the infrastructure, the facility improvements and the equipment replacement. So we wanted to keep that in the levy and have that steady. So that's when we proposed the capital improvement plan that was presented. The council budget committee and staff recommended that debt service levy rate to the $2.25. And again, this budget does show an increase in our debt service levy because of that. The overall millage rate is going to increase from $15 in 19601 to 1602036. The difference is 82 cents. And yeah, 82 cents. So again, all the funds, I'm sorry.
It says the overall millage rate is reduced?
No, I'm sorry. It's increased. It's increased. Okay. Yep. It's increased. Sorry about that. And um, yeah, and we want to have, you know, you want to stabilize that that over the next years is the plan. And of course, I wanted to also, you know, let you know that we we are going to show you a budget that's balanced. So all of the expenses are cover, excuse me, the revenues are covering expenses in all of the departments. So of the general fund, these are the departments that are all within the general fund. Police and animal control and building inspection and fire and ambulance are all under public safety. Under cultural is the library and park and wreck and cemetery. And then administration is separate. Of the, okay, so here shows a revenue summary broken out of the percentages of of each of the taxing, the the revenue areas. I'm trying to say property tax and transfers are the largest revenue sources for the general fund. And this chart will briefly identify the various funds and the project percentages that we're expecting in 22. The general fund is considered the primary operating budget for the city. You'll see a lot of transfers as well coming in. So the general property taxes, that includes your general levy taxes that we showed you on that state form. It's showing taxes for the operation and maintenance of the, you know, any kind of city owned center, right? If it was applicable. But it also shows the emergency management, property insurance, public library, you know, those are to name just a few that are under that. So we're showing a slight decrease in the assessed valuation. The city realized a decrease of 2%. So you showing that, Lee? So user fees and fines include, you know, police, fire, emergency service charges. And fines and fees, pool and recreational rental franchise fees and other. And one thing that is important in here is something that we talked about earlier is that all of the ambulance charges are going under a different area, right? They're coming in a different revenue stream. Is that right, Lee? You're showing those under transfers.
Yeah, so the other transfers are what that is, is that's your special revenue, that's your local options. That would be your you know, from just exactly like you said, from the other library and special revenue funds are good.
So license and permits are going to include your pet permits, your building permits, alcohol, tobacco. And then of course, grants and donations, pre simple grants, reimbursements, refunds. And then of course, the transfers that she was talking about would be within the general fund to offset some of the expenditures. Okay, so this one is the statewide average expenses for cities in our population. And it was provided by the Department of Management. So this kind of shows you kind of hard to really see, but you know, public safety should be 32% of your general fund dollars. Actually, recreation and culture and cultural, the library should be 37%. And again, this is just the statewide average. Some cities have pay, use general funds to help pay for public works, public works employees. Your city does not, so they take care of themselves in the road use fund. But your community and economic development, they might use some general funds for that. And then the 6% is the transfer out. So some, I I don't believe you're doing a lot of transferring out of the general fund. Is that right, Lee?
That's correct. The only transfer out would be on the trust agreement portion prior.
Oh, okay, okay. So here is the percentage for your, for the budget we're proposing is public safety. And if you remember going back, it also includes building inspection, police, fire, ambulance. So it's a quite a big chunk. It's pretty close to that statewide average of 32%, but 36%. Culture and recreation is at the 26%. And then you have those transfers are quite a bit for at 31%. General government's 229,000, so 7%. So it's kind of fun to like, kind of compare the two and just kind of see where you're at. And again, every community is different and has their reasons for that. So now I'm going to get into again, the, now I'm going to get into last year and this year. And these are the non-activity revenue sources. So it just, it's going into the general fund, but it's it is really going into the big pot of dollars, rightly. Is that how you'd say that? Non-activity revenues, they're the different revenue sources on the left side. Property taxes are up slightly or excuse me, are down a little bit. And that's the general property tax levy there. You can see there, we're looking at a little bit more employee benefits coverage with a couple of full time positions that we're recommending. Your tax increment financing road use, those are restricted like we talked about. And then grants and reimbursements are really only if we've already received them. We know we're going to receive those. They're, you know, have already been awarded, I guess you'd say. And then we're showing a large increase on that tax increment financing there. We're going to get in the departments now. Here's your department. So this year, of course, interim Chief Lira and interim Sergeant Josh Hauser have kind of taken the reign. Officer Satari has moved into the Bug area. So we have a position that's currently being advertised to fill his position now. Here, we're talking, showing the revenues. We're showing a large increase in revenue due to the intergovernment reimbursements from the local option sales tax for the equipment revolving plan. So that's why you're showing that. We also reduced, let's see here, we reduced vehicle inspections. And it's likely due to COVID. So you know, just seeing the average of that, we reduced what we're going to show for inspections this year. So on the police expenses, and again, if you look at our, I just pulled pulled this from our line item detail, again, squishing them into these categories. So these categories are in every one of the departments. So I am giving you more of a bird's eye view rather than talking about the paper clips and the pencils that are being, you know, purchased and so forth. So under personnel and benefits and development, we have a has decreased in the police department because of the entry level police chief per the salary matrix that we were going to review tonight. So we budgeted a little bit less for that. And then on the repairs and maintenance have been reduced. And then a vehicle is going to be purchased in from, that was slotted to be purchased in the equipment revolving plan. So that's why you're showing the capital increase. Overall, it's not a major, you know, increase in the police budget for this year. On the fire department, I guess we have, this is the latest picture that we have. So you can imagine it's probably difficult to get an updated current photo. So we'll try to get that moving forward. Here, we have the fire department continues to write grants. However, we just aren't going to show that revenue. Because, you know, they're competitive, they're really hard to rely on, and we don't have an award letter. So we just aren't going to do that. On the ambulance permits, fines and fees, they're up because Lee was recommending that we do the proper government reporting standards. And now they're going to show up here. They're going to show up in this line item in the budget. In the expense area, we are showing an increase due to filling up the part time fire chief with the full time chief. The budget returns back to the formal staffing levels and a one part time EMS coordinator and volunteer. So that is the area that of, that we were talking about earlier. Contractual service increase due to tort and liability insurance increase. And then the capital revolving accounts are being set up. Really, there's no expenses that are being requested at this time, but we're setting up those accounts. We talked about that earlier as well. Again, not a major increase, not a terrible increase in the budget overall. This is Terry Gert. As you know, he's planning to retire in the next couple of years. Therefore, we had updated the job description and we budgeted for a full time inspector in this budget in light of the potential increases in permits and inspections and succession planning that needs to occur. So we have budgeted for training of the new hire and to do some of that cross training. And he, we have him still helping assist in that succession plan for the next building inspector. Okay, it takes some time to do that. And with that said, there, the permit fees will be slight, you know, we expect a slightly increase with the construction this year. And then on this side, it looks incredible that, you know, with the new position. And here, just for council too, the plan was to, we decreased administration and moved all that code enforcement into the building inspector. So all the code enforcement is going to be under the in that job description with the building inspector. And they would have an office in city hall as well. And so what's difficult is that we're not showing it under administration anymore. Now we're showing it under public safety because it's, it's, that's where building inspection is. So that's the difference is again, having all the building and zoning, your new construction, I think you need to be ready for that. That person to be able to do those inspections at any time, right? Not on nights and weekends. Okay, so your street solid waste department is here. And you have, okay, so per the, per capita, your amount for 2022 is is $128 per capita. So that yields the 486,400. Last year, it was 127. So it's a dollar difference. So that's what your increase will be. And we're also allocating your local option sales tax amount. And really just a, you know, you permit some fines down, but the bond proceeds that you are planning to do for that GO bond. The proceeds will come in, but we're not showing that you're going to be spending a lot of those dollars. You're going to be spending some on engineering out of that. But but that's why you see a major increase in those revenue sources there. And again, not, you'll see, so the bond proceeds here is 420, but on the rep, on the expense side, it's not spending it all. You see, so you'll always have a balance there too. So on this, you have personnel costs that were decreased due to an employee moving to the water department. You have repairs, maintenance and so forth. That went up because the streets, building and grounds, I think they're going to do garage door and openers and garbage equipment is my understanding. And then under contractual services, that went up because of the lease payment for the sweeper. And your capital went up because of the capital improvement plan. And then also you're setting up the department's equipment revolving plan there too. So it's showing both of those equipment and the capital improvement plan. It's going to be easier next year to see, you know, it'll be leveling, but it looks like, wow, that's a lot of money that has increased their budget. But again, your revenues have to offset that and you have 867,000, right? And you're looking at a $798,000. So again, that's under budget. The new hires in the library is the custodian Dale Nelson, the part time librarian Kathy. And then Jacob Lane went from part time to full time and Lily Smith went from part time. And then Jacob Lane went from part-time to full-time and Lily Smith went from part-time to full-time as well. Here, the general, again, remember, we talked about local option sales tax and how they didn't have it showing in their, the budget. Now we are showing it here. And so that just kind of throws it off a little bit. For the most part, intergovernmental is about the same and so is grants and donations. And, and actually, uh, the library board had approved, um, using their donations to cover their capital and equipment. So that's where they're showing their revenue coming in. Library expenses, um, for personnel, they've done a reduction in their budget from last year. Um, and that could be just the new hires. Then they are showing repairs reduced and some other operational. I mean, again, these are just kind of my, you know, not very major. But then again, the capital is increased because they're going to fund some projects, again, by donations of, um, from the library board, the trust that they have dollars in. So covers that. Under Park and Recreation, you have Cobain and Nick here. And, um, again, local option sales tax is shown as a revenue that comes in for them. They are going to use some park donations that covers their capital improvement plan. They also are showing fines and fees and the cemetery permits, fines and fees. Again, not knowing what our rates are going to be for the Calumbarian, let's hope we get more revenues in this. But again, we're just going off of what we have now, um, until that comes in. And then the pool, um, again, based on history, um, what we're looking at there, trying to be conservative on those revenues as well. Under the expenses, personnel was reduced by the number of seasonal staff that Nick thought he needed. He also has contractual services increased because he wanted to fund a master park plan that he'll work with his board on and recreational activities. And then under the capital, that's going to be set up for your ERP and CIP as well. And this capital improvement project is to redo Friendship Park. And if you remember, he did receive a grant from the Ryan Memorial Trust for that. Administration. So under, uh, you know, permits, fines and fees, that's going to be a slight increase due to liquor permits and, um, in your tort liability, um, that, that's decreased as the council votes for, um, and actually, Lee, you might want to talk about that one. Do you know why that has, is it just a decrease for administration, but it increased in other areas? That, that might be needed to be explained.
So, so the tort liability levy, um, again, that just, that decrease is based on what we are levying for and, um, also some changes with the insurance costs as well.
Okay, so it's covering just not only the facility, but it's also staff, is that right? liability?
Yep.
And so if you have less people in the department, I suppose that's less too. And it just, okay, I knew that it weighs on different departments more heavily in riskier areas. And, okay, so I just want to make sure that council understood that too. Under personnel, we have, um, just a little increase again, and, and because there's been a change of all their job descriptions and, um, and the positions, all the positions have been moved around a little bit to, to do some more, what am I trying to say, due diligence and cross-training in that business. So really, the capital is really what we're showing by setting up the capital for, um, really, this is, I want to say sacking it away for phase two improvements or any other, um, internal infrastructure improvements that need to be made if you're going to do a custom dais, those kinds of things. So yet to be determined, but you're sacking it away for phase two.
Elizabeth, just a little bit on the personnel services.
Yeah.
The, the change there also, so the percentage that we broke down wages has changed just a little bit because we have, um, with our TIPS certification, we will, that's some of the transfer funds in. So what we're showing is, um, we're expensing a little more out of general fund, but we're going to be bringing in more revenue from the TIPS certification for those administrations.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. So if you remember, council, um, we presented when you did the urban renewal plan amendment, there was administrative costs that we were going to reimburse the budget for in utilized tax increment financing for several different departments. And that's what Lee is talking about. So now your proprietary, these are, um, your business, your enterprise funds is what I call them. They're inter, um, they're kind of interchangeably referred to. These are the funds that you have, you do not rely on them to support operations, but instead you charge user fees, um, of the system to cover the costs of service, including staff, maintenance, equipment and improvement upgrades, really everything. You're just, you're funding everything there. The proprietary funds include stormwater, solid waste, recycling, uh, sanitary sewer and water. And that's really it to cover all that. Here's your water department. The newest employees were a transfer from street that joined was Edgar and Mac. Your intergovernment here is, um, just a little bit lower. The charges for service are just showing the uptick in those, um, those charges to, to date. And then, um, I know we had the fines and fees, uh, were just reduced a little bit there. And then under here, your personnel costs are down due to a retirement employee. That was pretty significant. And then your contractual services, that includes your affidavit contractor, um, of Water Services LLC. And your repairs and maintenance operational, that went up due to a ma, a maintenance plan. So we're, you know, staff's putting maintenance plans together and now they're really kind of understanding what needs to get maintained and it's on a schedule. And actually, let me go back to that real quick because I, yeah, they did have just a little reduction in capital, but not significant. Here's your wastewater department. And actually currently, yeah, currently we're, no, I'm sorry, that's it. Okay, so we're not budgeting much of an increase in, in revenues here. Not a major for the next, next fiscal year, just a little bit here. And then, um, personnel's reduced because they had a fourth position that they did not fill. So that was reduced in FY twenty-two. Their operational supplies, um, have increased. And I believe that is, is that chemicals, Lee? I can't remember that one, that one chemicals.
Yeah, so, I mean, overall, um, their superintendent, um, Craig has done a really nice job of managing, you know, all of his operations. And so, um, in twenty-twenty-one, um, you know, we had inflated a little bit more on those expenses because, um, with Craig just taking over, we wasn't, you know, didn't know enough. But again, Craig's done a, he's been very diligent and, and he's, you know, utilizing and making sure that he's, you know, paying attention to the costs and of those operational supplies. Likewise, with the contracted services piece of, um, that would have to do with the, um, getting rid of the solids, um, with a, a local farmer we have an agreement with. And again, you know, Craig's done a nice job managing those pieces along with the rest of his staff.
So you can see the reduction in the debt service levy. That's going to be your debt, um, that you have on the, in the department. But then the capital was decreased. It's in line with your CIP and the ERP, but apparently you had a major, uh, project. If that's, if I recall, the digester issue, is that right, um, last year? So that's going to show a major decrease in the, in the department's budget. And again, um, as you already know, the, as you're looking at rates and you're looking at the five-year, the engineers are looking at, they have a copy of the capital improvement plan. They have a copy of their equipment plans. So they're considering everything for the departments, including their, their, uh, their budget. So, um, here's your electric department. And, um, here, you're showing a decrease in generation. So we're not able to, um, have as much in the revenues in the electric department for twenty-twenty-two. That means that, you know, personnel decreased due to the fourth position not being budgeted this year. And repairs reduced because of an expense, um, I believe an expense should have been coded differently. So it looks like it was high before, I think that was the issue. So it does, doesn't look right. So we had to change that, but, um, and then you have capital is, uh, decreased, but it's in line. Again, last year, I think you had the switchgear project. Now you're in line with the CIP and the equipment revolving plan. So that's the dollar amount we budgeted there. Again, if you go back to the pages before and just look at here, this column, you know, fifty-two, sixty-one, go here, forty-nine, eight, thirty, you know, so you're under budget in all of the departments. And if you go back and kind of look at each of those, you'll see that, um, that's what we're proposing. The last, uh, but not least is the garbage and recycling. And again, here, we're showing the charges, the servicer up just slightly. And then here, um, here we are showing, uh, an increase in, uh, let's see here. So it's in two, okay, so I need to explain this one, Lee. We were talking about this and this is a big deal. So in two thousand and thirteen, so, um, for council, there was an intergovernmental loan that was made to help bring the gov, the garbage and recycling fund into the positive fund balance. I don't know if everybody recalls that, remembers that. But in order to do so, the city borrowed money from your own utilities, from water, sewer and the electric funds. So, um, so far, the city has made eight of those ten payments. And in order to balance this budget and make sure that you're within budget, I would recommend that the city council forgive the internal loan back to those utilities for at least this year until you can review the rates for garbage and recycling. Because right now, your rates will not cover that internal loan payment. So again, the reason why you even had the internal loan payment was that there was not a review of the rates at that time. So now it's time because it's not going to even cover that internal loan payment to the other utilities. Now you can see from looking at the budget, utilities are going to be fine. And Lee actually did not budget for those, those internal transfers to be made to the utilities. So in order, again, for us to show that this was balanced, you're going to have to forgive that internal loan. So that is something for you to consider with approving, I mean, if you want to talk about that, we are happy to talk about that.
So I guess our recommendation would be to, um, just, you know, discuss that internal. At this point in time, um, the, the garbage recycling fund has to back those utilities, um, the entire principal amount. And, um, you know, really what we're doing is, is we're, we're, we're driving the, this fund back down into a negative balance. And, you know, that's not what we want to do since we've already, um, since that utility fund has already paid back over eighty percent and all principal has been collected. You know, I, I think it's a good recommendation to ask, uh, you to, you know, to forgive that note. And I can provide all of that information going forward, um, in order to do the action that we need to take in order to forgive that.
So if the council wanted to do that, we would just have an action of council just to make sure that that's on the books. So that if auditors ask, then it is, you know, formalized and agreed upon by all. So moving forward on that. So with that, again, our goals were to balance, um, the overall city property tax rate while maintaining that strong balance and providing departments with the resources and the equipment that they need to run efficiently. Again, um, we still have some work to do on the fire side of, of that. To collect the appropriate utility rates, um, we need to cover immediately. And I talked to you about, like, look at the garbage and recycling fund. And, you know, and Lee made sure that there were some dollars in there for you if you want to do the rate analysis on the garbage and recycling fund this next year. Because I would recommend that you do that as well. I know you're looking at a lot of rates right now. Um, and then to present a balanced budget, and that's what we've done tonight, with no reserves to be used for operating expenditures, um, in this budget. So, um, and really, like I said, we did presume that the backfill was going to be covered, was going to be included as well. So those things have all been included. I, the next steps, like I had said, is tonight, budget presentation, any updated changes, anything we missed, any questions about maybe some items that you want to make sure are included. Then we'll prepare those publications because on the fifteenth, actually, I think it has to go to the paper. But the sixteenth is when we would set the public hearing, um, for March second. And that's again, just for the tax levy rate. Um, and then after that, then you're setting the public hearing for the budget, which would be on March sixteenth. And then of course, staff has to make sure that gets to the county before the end of the month, so. Any questions, any of it? Questions? So there's no action tonight unless you want to discuss any changes that you would like to make to the budget or any? I'll let the mayor take over now.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Am I on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure I hit down mute, but, uh, I wanted to make sure you could hear me. Well, it's been kind of long, hasn't it? So we're on to, uh, the reports because, uh, we have tabled CD E F, ENF. And so we're on to report, uh, Leo, are you still with us? There you are. Do you have anything to address the council tonight, reference the engineer part?
Yes, I got a few things, I'll be very quick. City Hall, the bids, uh, the, uh, the advertisement is out and it bids February eighteenth. I've already had a couple of contractors call me and ask about the bid. I stayed out of the Quad Cities and, um, SC Construction out of Burlington had both talked to me about the project, so that's good news. Well, number two, um, we're still awaiting, uh, some, some data from, uh, from Northrop. The next rush, the casing and do another televising. And I'm getting a price from the well driller for that as lo, and also to go back over the prices he gave for some of his other improvements in the past. That should be coming in next couple of weeks. We're going to start the risk and resiliency. Chris Perisic is going to be starting that and having a kickoff, uh, not this Thursday, but the following Thursday at ten in the morning. Today, I did send in an administrative order, six-month report for the wastewater treatment plant. And it was for the last six months of twenty-twenty. You had just excellent results. Your wastewater director, as well as the, the, the collection system people, all reported well and everything looked really well. And I was, I was almost happy to write that report. So that's a, a full year of very good reports. And finally, we are working to finalize some rate study recommendations to come back to you and over the next month. And that's all I had.
Okay, any questions for Leo tonight? Hearing none? Hearing none. Thank you, Leo. So unless anybody has any objections, I, I maybe would entertain a motion that we just go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and accept and file all the department heads' reports tonight. I know it's 9:30 and we've been here since 4:45. Unless there's any specific questions and/or anything specific that the department heads would like the council to know.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Do I have to do, you have to do a roll call again, Leah, Lee? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Baronic?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Okay, all the reports were in our council packets. We have agreed to file those. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Anybody oppose? Thank you for your long evening and all your hard work, council. Good night.
Night. Thank you.